Out of the discussions with Confluence, both retail sections, residential, and some single family. Eventually it will. The city has a trail system that goes right up to where, at the bottom end of that map. And they'll eventually bring it into that. The racetrack, our sprint car track is just on the other side. So, very good. Go ahead, Renee. This gives you a financial picture, snapshot, of what the Marion County taxpayers did in partnership with the city. So we, again, bonded for eleven point one million. Now, we got a very good interest rate, around one point eight percent. We plan on this debt lasting about twenty years. We'd love to pay it off sooner, if possible. Correct? That's correct. So they went from VA, they went from VA to GSA. VA could not dispose of it. That triggered GSA. We acquired it from GSA. So we ended up spending ten point seven million of the allotted bond issuance for that. Got a great quote from our contractor, our facilities director here at Marion County managed the entire project. Chris Nestebi did a wonderful job with that. There's just a little timeline, and we'll give you a color. We've got some, a packet here for you to take with you. This is just timeline of some of the major events. We actually started working on this probably around twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen. But these are the major events that led to where we are at today. The city of Knoxville, working on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, is getting ready to lay the groundwork and the infrastructure for development of one of the first phases of the VA, about thirty houses and a splash park. All of the development of infrastructure will be the Knoxville's responsibility. We handled, again, the demolition and the preparation of that ground. We have one building outstanding. I don't know, we probably don't have a picture of it, of the laundry facility. We decided to leave one of the buildings up. It was the newest building on campus. And still had all of the equipment in there to do laundry for them. It was actually a regional site. So we've been looking for ways to utilize that, maybe gain funding for that, for that project, to try to utilize that building, get it hooked back up to utilities. Should it go to the racetrack? Should it go to the city? Something along those lines. So there's the, Steve, Keisha, anything you want to add on the VA before we go to the next one?
Nope, you covered it pretty well. No?
Yeah, Renee, what? Go ahead and flip. Yeah, flip back to the map. Nope. There you go, right there.
So this, this will be what we call brownstone style homes. And you'll have a combination of townhomes and residential here. This will be single family. And that's the region, that's the plan right now. We do have a site here carved out in Kaysville City, in school district, one of the own county school. It probably won't be here. It will probably be up in here, should they choose to do that. We've got three hundred and forty apartment units, eighty-seven row house. Let's see. So right, right there, you can see about a hundred and twelve thousand square feet of commercial, and then a hundred and eighty-nine thousand square feet in mixed use. So, and again, we'll give you one of these, and you can have all that.
The phase one does have its thirty-four homes that they're, yeah, they're focusing on?
This is phase one, right here.
Oh, sorry.
You're fine. So thirty, thirty-one to thirty-five units here, splash park right here.
Sure, where the laundry facility is.
Absolutely. So this is the old laundry facility up in this corner, racetrack right here. We were just awarded, Carla, on from Iowa Department of Economic Development, how much? So we're awarded one million dollars. We've worked on that for two years by secure those dollars to do some rehab for that structure. Or for demolition at least, but, yeah. Well, it's actually, it was kind of a combination. So we had to have statutory language change. We'll apply it for the demolition.
Yeah, it was a demo fund. Yeah, it was a million dollars for that.
Good. Next one.
Well, I'd like to say on a footnote that it was rather disappointing to me personally that the federal government wouldn't even, and we couldn't get any help from the federal government at all. I mean, they just, they just packed up and left. I was a little disappointed. Yes. I was very disappointed that they weren't, didn't offer any help whatsoever.
We have tried to do this, again, from the sense of our taxpayers, knowing where property taxes are. Just so you know, in ten, over ten years, and we can provide the documentation on this, Marion County has actually reduced its levy, its total levy rate from around ten point eight to nine point seven seven. So we've been doing these projects in this, at the same time, looking for ways to reduce costs. Our managers, our electeds, the boards have done an amazing job balancing those interests. Next one is Prairie Ridge. Keisha sits on this board. I sit on the VA one. And Keisha, I know, I want to, if you want to talk through it, you can, or I can do it. It's up to you.
Um, no, I mean, it's fine, Mark, if you want to go ahead. I mean, I know the slides were put together, but I can fill in when needed.
Sure. This was a project that was running concurrent to the VA project, and I bundled them together from a bonding standpoint. About four point six to four point seven million dollars, less complicated than the VA, because we didn't have any top-site infrastructure or top-site buildings. We had the demo. But structured similarly from an urban renewal standpoint in the development of workforce housing. And that's, again, its goal in Pella is to add workforce housing for the Pella community. Smaller, but our, our goal there was to help provide the infrastructure necessary for the developer then to build houses. So we, we consider this to be very successful. You can see the proposed single-family and townhome process. Go ahead and skip to the next slide, Renee. So that's the, the plat of Prairie Ridge, and where it is located. Hundred eighteen proposed units. Go ahead.
And we currently have thirty-one homes that are either started or finished in there. The townhomes have not, we're still working on bidding for the townhomes. So it's just a single-family homes currently.
One of the, and, you know, one of the unique features of this, as I've been told by other boards of supervisors, is we are maintaining the county-city partnership throughout this entire process on all three of these projects. It's important for our taxpayers to get a return. And, but also, if we want to do further economic development, we need to have our finger on the pulse of what's going on in these various communities. Go ahead.
So additionally with Prairie Ridge, they were able to bring in Smash Park and Chick-fil-A. And once we did the infrastructure for the development, so further economic development within Pella.
Yep, very good. Next slide. So this gives you an idea, again, of the valuations that we're, we're currently looking at. Again, the Marion County taxpayer on any of these projects will be paid back in a combination of the sale of the ground, but the valuation that we end up producing on these different developments. And that's really what we're looking for, is if we don't increase our population, if we don't increase our valuation in terms of total population, like many rural counties, even though we're on the edge of the metro, we will struggle in the future. Mike Nardini, the city administrator for Pella, and I met many years ago, and said that was a key goal of ours, was to how, how do we use the various financial tools available to us to help increase the population and get more workers that currently work in Marion County to move here? We have great businesses, both in Pella, Knoxville, and throughout the county. Next slide. This is our newest project. We're still in the, where it's not finalized yet, but it's called the Atkins Development. It's over in Pleasantville. Pleasantville's a small community. I don't know if Joe's on, but I want to say about sixteen hundred people live in Pleasantville.
Sixteen to seventeen.
Yeah, I think I'm close to that. But we're working with the city of Pleasantville, deploying about two million dollars. It could be two point three million dollars of county capacity to help them bring in both a business and provide the infrastructure support for future housing development. Pleasantville sits right along Highway Five, now a four-lane. So we want that community to be able to grow as well, and providing kind of a good arc of growth throughout all three of our communities that are north of ninety-two. Next line. Again, that gives you a little layout. Much to add there? Go ahead. There's some of the vital statistics for that project as well. Again, we could be two million, we could be two point three million when the project is said and done. Interest rates have obviously changed. The first two projects, we were able to secure very favorable interest rates. But now on bonds, they're approaching that mid-five percent range. So that has changed dramatically, just in a short period of time. Pardon? Cost of building has fluctuated dramatically as well. And so we've, we've seen that. That's impacted Keisha's project the most, probably in Prairie Ridge, where she's seen those prices start out at a certain level that we targeted, and those housing values went, they, they went north pretty fast.
Yeah, they, they increased rather quickly. They are starting to come down a little bit, but not, not a lot, so.
So we're very sensitive to that when we look at how do we incentivize folks to come in and take these properties? Because what you could build, maybe you could afford twenty-five hundred square feet. Well, because of both mortgage rates and the cost of construction, you maybe only can afford eighteen hundred square feet. So that has changed how we think about these projects dramatically. It still doesn't change the overall need for workforce housing for our employers, Vermeer, Helicorp, Three M, Hormel, Wyler, and, and the others. We, we need to have capacity, and we just haven't had that. Pella's a good example of where we see these projects going. Prior to Prairie Ridge, twenty to twenty-five new housing starts a year. Well, with Prairie Ridge, they had fifty-six this year. So doubled the number of housing starts. And we hope Knoxville has that same level of success with the VA. And then there's the potential economic impact of that. That's a lot. Do you have any questions?
Congresswoman, do you mind if you use the mic? We have people online that would probably want to hear from you. So if you don't mind, it should be on, I think.
It's on.
Okay.
Thank you. You always assume the mic is hot, so. So am I correct in, in making the assumption that the city or county does not own the property? And you're facilitating the development of the property?
Variety of arrangements. So with Pella and Pleasantville, they control their property. With Knoxville, we own the prop, the county owns that property. That was part of the condition to be able to get it from GSA.
And so is the property then being sold to the developer, then the developer selling the townhomes, the retail space, or renting, as it may be if it's, you know, retail? Or is there a different arrangement in regards to the property where there is city-county ownership?
Yeah, and that's a great, great question. Knoxville acts as really the sales agent. So however they want to develop that, whether that's through individual land purchases or through developers, they will, they will handle that piece and structure that with what best fits into their city plan. Great question, great question.
So you're increasing the ability for your workforce to be located here rather than commute, which is helpful given the price of fuel. However, the other issue I think that comes about is childcare. So when you're bringing these families in, having them locate here, and so is there work on the city-county on that front, working with your employers on having adequate childcare? And then what does this do to your school system? Or do you not know yet, on your development at the Veterans Project, the Veterans Building Project, you mentioned that you had a potential for an elementary school there, which if you have young families moving into that, certainly will be something that may need to be addressed.
That's a, that's a great, let's start with the childcare one first. Carla has done some work on this, and I'm gonna let you speak to that.
As I stated earlier, we completed the housing study in twenty sixteen, followed up by the next year doing a childcare study we did with First Children's Finance. Kind of before people were doing childcare studies. Probably the best part of that study was bringing people together through kind of some of the conversations that happened in our planning process. That was where Pella Corporation partnered and opened their new facility. In addition, over in Pella, they also opened, they're in the process of doing their early childhood center in Bussy. We saw her able to double her capacity and continue to work with Stepping Stones here in Knoxville. So it has helped. We've identified some of the problems, and surprisingly, in our communities, they have different problems. And that's not shocking, but we did survey over a thousand parents as part of this process to understand where the childcare issues are, whether that's sick care, whether that's second and third shift care, whether it's slots, whether it's price, and a lot of times it's all of the above. Certainly, some of the things that have gone on in the state level have helped with some of the childcare issues as far as what they called the cliff, where people were not taking promotions, because if they did, they lost a hundred percent of their childcare, and it really didn't make up the difference. So we're trying to address all those issues, but it is a very complicated issue, but it goes right along with housing. So as, you know, our schools are building capacity, our communities and companies, some of the new programs that allow employers to do childcare if they so choose have been helpful. So, you know, all of those options are very important for the housing to be successful, because one of the things we learned with our people in surveying them, many of our workers are moving in from other areas, of which most are moving in from larger areas, larger metropolitan areas. So what they want for their child is not in-home daycare. They don't trust it as much. Or if they do want in-home care, it needs to be a certified home care site. So important to them were child, childcare centers. And so that's where we focused a lot of our effort, was helping our childcare centers, because what we're seeing in the new employees we're attracting, that they want that curriculum from birth to when the children go to school. So that type of curriculum, daycare setting is what their expectations are.
Yes, thank you, Carla. And I know the supervisors here have had various meetings throughout our county on this topic. I've met with our folks here in Knoxville for our Stepping Stones location, which is one of our childcare sites. Costs have changed dramatically. I'm sure everybody has experienced that. From retention, cost of the buildings, which has turned some of the financials for these, these are not money-making endeavors, anyway. But it's really, but especially our local one in the red. So I know that we're trying to think through what are some remedies for that. I, if, if there's one thing on, and we'll talk about this in conjunction with schools, we're a county that is taking this upon ourselves. We see the issues, we do the work, and we're putting, our taxpayers have put skin in the game. But to Steve's point earlier a little bit, if there are additional dollars available for a county like ours, we sure would like to be, avail ourselves to that, to help with these projects. On the school side, Knoxville, probably, I don't know what the timing would be. This would be more a school board question. But I know they are looking at the potential for a new elementary school. They have one that has been, Joe, do you know how North School is? Nineteen sixty. So a variety of different discussions around North and what its future might be. But it either has to be updated dramatically or replaced, is what it's coming down to. And so we carved out a location that if the city and the school district want to, they will have a place for that.
Congresswoman, I would like to state that, you know, overall, we're just trying to grow our county. We know that in our census, from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, we only grew a little over a hundred. So it's not, we see impacts of growth, like, but we're not retaining enough. And so it's the ebb and flow, and we want to be able to grow in our, in our county, especially when we're doing these projects. We're hoping it will incentivize people to look at us. We are close to the metro, which has been, you know, problematic. But we want to be able to offer some of those things. And you brought up a good point on trails. We would, I would love to see a trail. I know that there was one that, the Red Rock Prairie Trail, yep. Going from Red Rock to Knoxville, that would be a wonderful trail site that we would love to explore, but we know that it costs money to be able to do that, to explore, and the option of, I know I talked to Tyler about this, and even doing the cost analysis and what it would take. So trying to look at different options. So any, anything that you have that, that you see that is coming for opportunities, maybe we could see, you know, looking into, or?
Well, I think certainly, number one, I, I was gonna say, I've got a few minutes before I have to go. The purpose of, of doing these and meeting with elected officials, county supervisors, mayors, city administrators, is, you know, to understand, you know, what our cities, what our communities need, where there's a state-federal nexus, and then how we can help. So thank you for G twenty-eight. You know, there are some people who do not like community funding projects, others who do. I think it's an opportunity for representatives to be able to, to represent and advocate for their district. We're not increasing the amount of federal spending. I know Marion County is very fiscally conservative. I love the fact that they are. And they've been able to attract a very vibrant, you know, both business community as well as residential community. And so your citizens appreciate that. I appreciate that. So we're not increasing the amount of federal government spending. It's that small twenty, twenty-one percent of discretionary. We're determining where it goes as congresspeople, rather than the president of either party, determining where that money should go. And so this is an opportunity for us, I think, to represent our districts and advocate for our districts. So certainly in your conversations, both with our district staff and then with Tyler, my chief of staff, you know, where there are opportunities, they'll certainly let you know. I think that community project funding should, should be, it looks like we are going to be able to go ahead with that this year. We never know at the beginning of the federal fiscal year if we will or not. And those that, you know, solicitation for applications will be, I think, probably toward the end of the month or the beginning of March.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
And then Andy, would you, I mean, he, he will be able to help us on, on how we proceed with that? Okay.
Absolutely.
I know your time is precious, and we do appreciate.
Your time is precious, so.
Oh, yeah, no, but I appreciate you take, taking the time and coming to speak. And we do thank you for the G twenty-eight funding there. It has been very beneficial, and it will help us tremendously.
I, I think it's one of the points I've made in Congress is that, and actually I mentioned this to the governor last night, that we've been able to get funding for some of our county roads that have been on the state list for over twenty years. And while larger communities, larger cities get funding, get roads, get, you know, nice new, they're beautiful bridges and overpasses, you know, very often, you know, rural Iowa gets left out. And so I will say that I'm actually very proud that we've been able to get funding for some of our rural and our county roads. And, you know, most of our community funding projects have been for hard infrastructure, almost all of them. Not ninety, you know, not a hundred percent, but very high percentage have been for infrastructure projects, which are desperately needed in our rural areas of Iowa, and, and very pleased to have been able to do that. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And we do have a printout for you, so I don't know who carries that, or who you. All right, so we'll, we'll send you that. And thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Nope.
Thank you. Thank you, Congressman.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Thank you very much. Thank you. Very good.
Andy, do we get your time for a little bit? Are you awesome? Do you want to, do you want to just use the mic, or do you want it, whatever would work easiest for you?
Yeah, I'm just here to kind of listen to what's going on here in Marion County, kind of projects you've been focusing on, and then any ways that we can be helpful. I know we've talked about, you know, the community project funding, and I know we've been kind of doing some outreach, you know, trying to let folks know about that. So definitely if there's any, you know, projects you want to, you know, go after again this year, you know, we can definitely put you in contact, write people, kind of go over what the process will be. Likewise, you know, federal grants, you know, USDA's got a lot of rural development grants out there. That goes kind of, you know, you think, see USDA, and you kind of think it's all farm and agriculture, but it's. but it's wide range of different stuff, that, uh, there might be some possible, you know, some funding revenues there that you haven't thought of, or maybe, you know, might be applicable to something you're working on. Um, and we're always willing to help with, um, you know, letter support, uh, along with any grant applications, you know, just let us know what you're, you know, what, what you're submitting, and let us know the details. We're more than happy to take a look at it and see if we can help you to letter support.
I believe LDJ tapped in one of the USDA grants, didn't they? LDJ Manufacturing of Pella, they, they tapped into the USDA grant.
Okay.
Yeah. So Andy, when we're thinking about this as a board, is there certain areas that we should be focused more on, that would more have a likability than, than others? I mean, because you've kind of heard, seen what we're doing. Is there an area that, whether it's, um, renovation of a, of a, of a building? Or, I mean, I, I went over the review, what received last year. Um, I see there was a farmer's market pavilion in Clinton, and then there was obviously the trail, um, and then the riverfront park and marina. But, you know, like for us, we don't have everything done for like the trail system. So wondering how much, when we're doing these and compiling them, how much information do we need to have? I mean, is that, I mean, do we need to have all the architect, all the engineering, everything ready to go? I mean, that's the cost that we're trying to figure out. I, I, you know, I feel like.
Yeah, and that would be a question that I would have to refer to our, uh, point of contact in their DC office with the community project. Uh, just because I think the details, it seem, they seem like they're pretty consistent year after year, but there may be some differences too. Um, but I will make sure you are, uh, linked in with him. I don't think there needs to be a ton of details, at least at, at the outset. Uh, but I'd have to kind of let him to speak to that to you.
Okay.
About kind of what you need. But in terms of projects, you know, I think it's just got to have some kind of community aspect to it. Uh, but beyond that, it could be, you know, road repair. It could be, you know, helping put in a, you know, new restroom systems at a park. It could be the whole wealth, you know, different options out there, so.
Because it looks like the funding can vary, obviously. I see some that are smaller and some that go larger. And so, um, do you have like a larger, I mean, I see one was one point five. Is that considered large, or is that considered? Because I know we got to two million. Um, is there, is there, you know, do they award to a certain level? Like, is there a cap?
Only cap that I'm aware of, projects each member can kind of, uh, submit every year. And I think that's, that's ten.
Okay.
I don't think there's a financial cap on that. Don't quote me directly on that either.
And then on the USDA, I know that we have looked at some USDA, but a lot of times there's a lot to it. And, um, the follow-through, it could be a long time, um, you know, when, when you're putting in something like that. We have, we have worked with the city of Knoxville, and they've recently had where they used USDA grant for, and it was to do with a park area. Well, now we have to be able to find another park if you were to, on, if you were going to take that park and not use it any longer, now you have to find a different location. It is all, are all USDA similar like that? Do you have any idea?
I mean, any federal grant, there's going to be different strings attached, obviously. Um, and it's going to vary grant by grant, program by, by program. Um, and so that's something we always tell folks, you know, there's, there's money out there. Don't be afraid about going after it. But just like, you know, if you're going out and buy a car or buy a house or something, just kind of make sure you know the details.
Read the fine print.
Read the fine print. Just, you know, so you, you make sure that there's no deal breakers in there. It's like, you know, we like this, but we really don't like this aspect of, you know, what there's going to be with this grant down the road. So maybe this isn't the right fit for us.
Okay.
Um, and that's something, you know, we can, feel like something's taken too long, or if you've got questions about process or something, you know, we can always get you hooked in with different folks to, to make sure those questions are being answered. Um, you know, we're always, always happy to do that. Uh, sometimes grants can take a while to get the awards out, and sometimes come out pretty quick. So I don't know. I won't say we can go out there and make the awards, you know, happen any quicker than they're able to, but, you know, we'll definitely make sure all questions are answered. Um, but, you know, if you're contacting somebody and you're not getting a response, you know, let us know, and we can kind of make sure that nothing's falling through the cracks or something, making sure you're getting the, the information you guys need, so you can make a well-informed decision on, you know, kind of what you want to do.
All right.
That's good.
Anybody else have anything, Brandon?
He's thinking.
Yeah, I are. What's your position? What do you, what, what, the rollback on the tech property taxes? What, what do you feel, or what, what, what does your office feel like would be a fair shake to the taxpayer on? You know, all, all, a lot of these county budgets were already made before these rollbacks were changed and.
Andy's more at the federal level, and I think.
Yeah, I think that was a.
He's gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's, uh, yeah, but, yeah, so that's something you'll have to talk to, uh, state legislators about. Um, we're the federal side, so all this stuff, I come from Washington DC. Um, and I'm the constituent services and grants director, and then I also do the military academy nominations.
Okay.
As well.
All right, well, thank you.
You bet.
No. You know, Andy, I appreciate it. Um, you know, if, if we could find out, um, when that date is exactly, you know, when it's opening up and we can apply, is it open up now, or is it?
For the community funding?
Yep, yep.
It's, I don't think it's open yet, but I think it's coming up here shortly.
Okay.
So, but I'll make sure that Kyle's got your contact information.
Okay.
And is there one specific person I, should I, all three of you, or is there one specific point person?
Um, if you, if you just want to email us, that is fine. I mean, I don't have a problem with that, you know, so, yeah. And at least let us know, and then we can continue to think about what, what we'd maybe like to, you know, um, apply for. Now, is there any hindrance in that we were awarded this year? Does it matter if you get?
I don't think it should matter. I think it's, it'll just determine a lot, how many project, you know, applications come in. You know, like I said, if it's like years past, we're limited to ten. So, you know, if there's only ten that comes in, probably, you know, no problem if there's fifty that come in. You know, I, you know, I don't know what that process would be, but I would not let, you know, that hinder you or keep you from making any applications again this year.
Great. And then, um, do you, I mean, does a pool of people, um, or does Congresswoman actually get to involve to be able to select, or how does that work?
Yeah, I'm not sure on the exact process there, but I think it's, they'll, they'll go through and they'll, you know, look at every project individually, and then kind of weigh amongst everything else. So, but I can't speak to what the exact, uh, process is.
Okay, all right. Well, Andy, if there is no further, you know, questions, yeah. We appreciate you. Appreciate you taking the time to come. Thank you for emailing us and reaching out. We appreciate that, and thank you for corresponding, allowing to have Congress, Congresswoman Marionette Miller Meeks with us, and so we thank you, so.
Yeah, and don't be shy of any questions or anything. We can be helpful, uh, whether it's board or supervisors, or, you know, one of the county departments of the county structure, or any of the towns, uh, you know, don't feel, don't feel shy about reaching out to us. That's what we're here for.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Oh, um, no further discussion. Entertained adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Remy?
Hi.
Second, or.
Hi.
And that too, Danny.
Thank you, everyone.